I think as usual, we're going to begin with a roundup of what we talked about last week. And then we will gradually ease our way into today's topic. So last week, we continued with the topic of authority, you know, spiritual authority. The purpose of studying authority really is so that we may understand what we have been equipped with, what God has made available to us, so that we may be able to use it, you know, to, to, to score the victories that God really wants us to have. It seems to me that not, you know, the reason why, I mean, there are so many reasons why we're not working in the authority, myself included. And the, you know, one of the reasons that we're distracted is so much else going on in life that we don't even have time to get hold of the tools that God has given us. And, and many of us are not pursuing our calling. We're not pursuing our calling and authority, one of the things that you need authority for is not just spiritual warfare, but also to be able to walk in your calling. There's an area of life that God has prepared for you, specifically you, that only you can do as well as he wants it done. And to be able to do it, you need to understand certain truths. This is why Paul, when he heard about the faith of the Colossians, of the Ephesians, he said, "I bow my knees," I bow my knees to the God, you know, the Father of Allah, Jesus Christ, "that he may open your eyes to the riches of his inheritance." And for many years, those, you know, I used to just read, especially from Ephesians, chapter one, or the, from verse one all the way to maybe say verse 18, it's one long sentence that spans almost 15 verses. And I used to read those verses and they would just go right over my head. They just didn't mean anything because it just didn't mean anything. There was nothing there that was realistic. It took years to even come close to understanding what Paul was writing about. But Paul was somebody who walked in the power of God. He walked in the authority of the believer and he knew the importance of these things. He knew that unless you get hold of these tools, you will not achieve much in the kingdom of God. You see, if you want to just do something for God and get some results, a lot of the things that we are talking about, you might not need. But if you want to get God's results, if you want to do what he has called you to do and get the results that he has planned for you to get, then you know what? You need to get hold of the tools. You need to get hold of the tools. I personally believe that Bible study ought to be the most sought after religious meeting in the body of Christ. If we truly understood the riches of the Bible, if we truly understood what's waiting for us in the Bible, we would spend vast amount of our time just studying the word of God, just participating in Bible studies. Because we would know, that, that's where we would get the, the tools that we need. So I believe what we're doing is so important. I was talking to, I think Irene it was yesterday, and it was yesterday or the day before, the time moves so fast, sometimes you lose track. But we were talking and one of the things that we mentioned was that this Bible study itself is spiritual warfare. Why do you think the devil is not happy with it and different people have been experiencing different sort of attacks? It's because itself is spiritual warfare. He can sense that people are being equipped. He can sense that people are getting hold of some truths. And the word of God is so powerful, if you get hold of it, honestly, you don't need anything else. You don't need anything else. And I've gone through years of running from one conference to another. I've chased many, 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 you know, I've gone after many conferences, looking for God, looking for a move of God, looking for some anointing, looking for some power. Then I discovered it's all in my Bible. It's all there. So let's take these things seriously. Let's take these things seriously. Okay, so going back to what we're talking about, we, one of the things we highlighted was the purpose of authority. And we, we also looked at the purpose of power. We said, you know, power becomes necessary when authority isn't getting the job done. And we use an example, if I was listening to last week's session and I, I was blessed, listened to it because, you know, don't think because I'm the one sharing, you know, I'm, I'm doing a lot of talking here. That means I've got everything that I'm saying, you know, well ingrained into me and that I'm walking in it hundred percent. No, I'm learning as I go constantly. And the thing about the word of God, you never get to the point where you feel like you've arrived. You never get to the point where you say, oh, I've mastered this. No, this is the word of God. In other words, there are layers and layers and layers and layers of meaning, depth of understanding to be acquired if you, if you really commit yourself to the word. So it's a, it's a work in progress for me constantly. When I was listening to it and then I just thought, this is actually quite profound. This analogy of, you know, the law, or rather not the law, but authority, power not being necessary when authority is working well. I mean, look at society. Let's compare those of us that maybe live in, you know, some western, the western part, you know, in the west. So if I may put it that way, those of us that live in the west and those of us that don't. What's, you know, what the striking difference between living in the west and living elsewhere? It's order, it's above everything, it's order. Everything is in its place. But why are things in their place? It's not just because they have systems, yes, but also because people are law-abiding. People don't need to be coerced into doing what's right. They respect authority. The police officer by and large relies on his authority. Very rarely uses power. In fact, it's not supposed to be using power unless things are really bad. So authority, you see the uniform and you respect the uniform. You see the police car, you respect it. But guess what? There are people who are not keen on, you know, police officers don't respect the authority of the police officer. Then what does the police officer do? He gets a reinforcement. And then, and when the reinforcement comes, they don't come with, you know, they don't care about authority. I mean, not that they don't care about authority, but they are not just coming to flash their uniforms and their badges. They're coming with guns, they're coming with power. So, so much can be done with, with authority. Jesus prayed, prayed or taught his disciples to pray, "The kingdom come, the kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven." What's that? God's will should be done here. That's law, you know, that's in other words, that we should become law-abiding in relation to God's law, in relation to God's word, that we should become law-abiding. If every one of us aligns their lives to the word of God, you would not need coercion. You would not need even manifestation of power. The problem is there's rebellion on this planet and power is needed. But by and large, it's authority that is more, is needed the most. And we need to understand that authority, starting from individual authority. You as an individual, God has given you authority over your life, over the devil, because he has placed you far above principalities and powers. How did he do that? He placed you in Jesus and then Jesus ascended into heaven and sat at the right hand of God the Father, far above all principalities and powers. Earlier in the Bible studies, in this Bible study, we explained the difference between being in Christ and Christ being in you. That we emphasize Christ being in us. If Christ is in you, you know, God get born again, Christ will come into your heart. But we said, an even greater truth is the fact that you are in Christ. Why is it a greater truth? It's because you, you being in Christ means you are hidden there. It means that if the devil wants to come for you, he needs to deal with him first. Your victory, if you think your victory stems from Christ being in you, and it does, because Bible says greater is he that is in you, that he that is in the world, then think about the victory that comes from being in Christ and him being seated up there. From where you now look down at those that are trying to fight you. You fight from a position of victory. You fight from a position, in a higher position, an exalted position in him, not by yourself. Then the victory becomes much easier. When we understand authority, our prayer lives will change. We're talking about prayer today. Our prayer lives will change because a lot of the prayers that we say, we say that we make those prayers because we don't understand what God has given us. We don't understand what's within our power to do. Have you noticed that Jesus used to rebuke his disciples a lot? And usually what were they about? It wasn't about some sin that they had gone and committed, it was about unbelief. One day he told them, "Let's cross over to the other side. Let's get in the boat, let's go over to the other side." We were talking about the other side of the, you know, of Lake Edessairet or the Sea of Galilee. So they got in a boat and went. On the way, a storm broke out and the disciples thought they were going to die. Jesus had fallen asleep. But you, you question that sleep because Bible says there was water in the boat and they were concerned they were going to drown because there was so much water in the boat. How could Jesus have been sleeping? I think either there was some supernatural sleep happening right there or Jesus essentially was lying there with his one eye open, just watching these guys. Because when they woke him up, the first thing he did was to, you know, he rebuked the, the storm or rather the wind. And then what did he do? He rebuked them, rebuked them for their unbelief. Because as far as he was concerned, he was here to teach them principles that would make it possible for them to walk in the same power and authority that he was. And so when he couldn't see that happening, he, when he saw them still operating at human level, just making, you know, behaving like everyone else when there's a problem, panicking just like everyone else. It frustrated him. He was God, but it frustrated him and he rebuked them. Jesus knew and, and you see, he, these stories have been written down for our learning. It's been put there, carefully put there by the Holy Spirit. With John, in John's Gospel, you know, John makes it clear that the number of deeds that Jesus performed, if they were to be written in the book, that there would not be enough books to fill them. So in other words, this is just a select few, a select few of the deeds that Jesus did are found in the Bible. But the Holy Spirit may show that this particular story was told by, you know, at least, I think, three of the evangelists, so that we would know, we would learn something from that. Jesus woke up from sleep and first thing he exercised is authority. I really want to challenge us. You have done a lot of praying. You know, you're a believer from Africa and I don't know a believer from Africa who doesn't spend a lot of time praying. You've done a lot of praying. Now pause. Start using your authority. When you come to a problem, stop screaming. Stop crying out to God. Ask yourself, what does the word of God say about the situation? Peace, be still. Start exercising your authority. God gave you lips, God gave you a mouth so that you could use it for these very purposes. Jesus said, what's, you know, anybody, if you have faith as little as a mustard seed, "You shall say to this mountain, be removed and cast into the sea, and it will obey you." It will obey you. You start exercising your authority. Because I'm not talking about, you know, don't start causing earthquakes everywhere with your, you know, moving mountains. You're talking about situations in your life and in other people's lives. Stop crying out to God. Stop begging for mercy. It's a very interesting passage from the Old Testament. You all remember how Moses brought the Israelites to the edge of the Red Sea? Pardon me. And by the way, before they got to that place, God had said, "I'm not going to lead you by the way of the Philistines." Because if you look, if you check out the map of Israel and Egypt, you'll find that the two nations are very close. They actually have a border. And to get from Goshen, which is closer to the Nile Delta, to the promised land, that's a short distance. They could have just gone round like that and then they've been in there. But God said, "If they go that way, they're going to meet the Philistines." And those were warfare in people and he knew this nation wasn't ready. So he said, "I'm going to lead you elsewhere." Plus, God wanted them to come to Mount Sinai because he had already told Moses, "I want to meet you there." So you had lots of different promises that showed that God was going to get them there. But then they got to Red Sea and it seemed almost accidental. How did we find ourselves? We were supposed to go to the promised land. Look at where we are now. Suddenly there's sea, why would we cross this? This Moses, what's wrong with you? Wow, what have you done? When problems arise, that's usually the attitude of mankind. But God is teaching us, he wants us to rise above this subal behavior. Let's begin to act like our children of our father begin to exercise authority. Let's begin to discern the situation. Let's begin to exercise our authority. Anyway, Moses brought the people to the edge of the Red Sea and he told the people, he did what, you know, a great leader should do. He said, "Stand by and see the salvation of the Lord." He spoke beautifully, but it looks like once he had done that, he then fell on his knee crying to God. "God, we are going to die." Because you know what? The next thing the Lord said to him, "So why are you crying out to me?" That was the next question. "Why are you crying out to me?" It's, I love the way God speaks because his words are loaded. He's king, he doesn't, you know, throw words about. You just say a few sentences and then go figure, go and analyze those words yourself. So why are you crying out to me? Ask yourself, why was God asking in that question? Why are you crying out to me? Why? Because Moses had already reassured the people, "Stand by and see the salvation of the Lord." So the next movement is not to cry and beg, so exercise authority. You know what the Lord said to him? He said, "What's inside your hand?" Moses said, "It's a stick." He says, "So you are the one with the stick. You'll be using this stick 10 miracles, 10 plagues in Egypt." Plus, you know, the miracle of when it turned into, the stick turned into a snake. Why are you here behaving like there's no solution? Moses rose up and he stretched that rod at the sea in a split in half. There are lessons then, of course. And the question that might be on your mind right now is how do we know whether God wants us to do this or that? Whether, you know, I think even Sue, you asked that question. When do we pray and when do we exercise authority? It's a difficult question. I wish there was a simple formula that I could give you. When it's like this, when X equals, when X equals this, then Y equals that, then you know, you, you, this is what you get. No, sadly, it's not like that with the things of God. God did it like that on purpose because Christianity is not supposed to be a formula-based thing. It's supposed to be a personal walk with God, where we begin to sense where he wants us to go. Even the early church, the one that Jesus himself raised. Do you know that it's not always, it wasn't, they weren't always hearing the voice of God from heaven that they had to discern? In Acts, chapter 15, when the question of, you know, eating of food sacrificed to idols and all of that came about. You know, I think there was things around, oh, sorry, or rather it was about a question about circumcision. Yeah. And, and, and adherence to Jewish law, when that question came. They prayed and they discerned. And finally, James said, "It seems, it seems right unto us and unto the Holy Spirit." The fact that he started, you see, normally you don't pull, when you talk about God, you don't put yourself first. You don't say, "It seems right to me and God." Who, who, who is the, who is, who is the bigger partner here? It seemed right unto the Lord and unto me. But the fact that he said, "It seems right unto us," tells me that they had to discern and trust that the Holy Spirit was with them. Do you get it? They had to discern that this was the right thing to do because if you read Acts, chapter 15, you'll see that James and Pete, they all, they reasoned. They listened to different arguments that they said, "Okay, it looks like this is what the Lord is saying. We haven't heard him, but this is what we're thinking. It seems right unto us." And because we are not sensing any disquiet within our spirit, we think the Holy Spirit is with us as well. So it seems right, or it seemed right unto us and unto the Holy Spirit. There is a discretion for a believer to exercise and there will be times when you will exercise it and not be hundred percent certain whether this is what God wants you to do or not. It's okay. It's okay. It's okay to make mistakes. You see, this is the beauty of, you know, Christianity. It's okay to make mistakes because it's supposed to be a living thing. When a child is growing, when a child is learning how to walk, it falls all the time. But you, as a parent, don't get upset with the child before, that's just part of learning. It's the same way, you won't get it right all the time. Sometimes you will feel like God wants you to act and you act and then it's, oh, maybe, maybe I should. But you've learned, you've learned, now you know something new. But if you decide not to move at all because you're afraid you might get it wrong, you never learn anything. So it's okay, it's okay. But going back to, going back to that, you know, that story with Moses by the Red Sea. The Lord said, "Look, what are you crying out to me for?" That tells me that God expected Moses to have discerned that situation, that after he stood and spoke in the name of the Lord, "Stand by and see the salvation of the Lord." Because it's not like God said, "I'm going..." He believed because of what the Lord had been saying along the line, that God was going to rescue them. And at that moment, God expected him not to then retreat and start crying. The next step had to also be a step of faith. So what I'm trying to say is, my challenge to every one of us here is this. Stop constantly backtracking, crying out to God, thinking that the more pitiful you sound before God, the more likely it is that you're going to stare up his mercy, his compassion. That's actually unbelief. Take what he has given you. Take what he has given you and use it. And you will bring him glory in doing so. Okay, so that's all about authority and it's gradually taken us into the subject of prayer, even though I hadn't planned it that way. We said to exercise of authority requires knowledge, faith, certainty, boldness and persistence. It's very important. Jesus never spoke to any demon apologetically, never. Get thee behind me, Satan. Come out of her and do her no harm. He forbid them to even talk. When you are dealing with, you know, you don't have to see a demon to have that attitude. If you see problems that you know these are not coming from God, treat those problems like they're demons. Speak to them authoritatively, tell them to get out. But as we explained last week, if you've done the spiritual warfare, then settle down and ask God to give you wisdom to know how to tackle the problem from a practical perspective. Because it's not everything that's going to be spiritual or not, or not every solution that's going to be spiritual. Sometimes it'll be part spiritual, part physical. And we've got to, we've got to be sensitive to that. Okay, so there's a passage here from Luke, chapter four, verses 31 to 34. And we've, I think we've come back to it before. I mean, we've, we've talked about it before and now we'll come back to it again. But I think it bears repetition because it's so important. Now, then he went down to Capenham, talking about Jesus, a city of Galilee, and was teaching them on the Sabbath. And they were astonished at his teaching, for his word was with authority. Now in the synagogue, there was a man who had a spirit of an unclean demon and he cried out with a loud voice saying, "Let us alone. What have you, what have we to do with you, Jesus of Nazareth? Did you come to destroy us? I know who you are, the Holy One of God." But Jesus rebuked him, saying, "Be quiet, come out of him." And when the demon had thrown him in the mist, it came out of him and did not hurt him. Then they were all amazed and spoke among themselves, saying, "What a word is this? For with authority and power, he commands the unclean spirits and they come out." And when we, when we talk, when we first talked about this particular passage, we said, "The devil likes theatrics. He is a dramatist, he likes show, he likes audience, he likes applause." See, you know, this was a demon that had already been given his marching orders. It had to just leave, but it wasn't going to leave quietly. You see, Jesus said, "Be quiet, I don't want to hear your voice and come out of him." So the demon knew he couldn't shout, but he was going to do something else. Threw this person down violently, but did not hurt him and then left. That's the devil. Even on his way out, he would try to do some, just to try and, you know, fighting you. Stand your ground. Stand your ground. In fact, one of, there's an example in the, in the Gospels where after the demon came out, I think it was a child that he came out of and it was like the child was, appeared as though he was dead. Sorry, I thought somebody was trying to reach me. The child appeared as though he was dead, as though he was lifeless. That's what is the most, why they want, they want, you know, they like an audience. The people there watching this whole thing, the demon has been given his marching orders. It should walk away ashamed, but it's not going to, it's going to try and do something so that you, so that at least the people watching might think that it still has some power. Yes, Jesus told me to go, but I didn't just go like that, you know, I still tried to show something. Yeah, that's the nature of the devil. I'm saying all of this just to let us know that sometimes before you experience a victory in your life, there might be a little bit of, you know, there might be some skirmishes there and those things might scare you. It might make you think, "Oh, God is not doing anything." You know, you pray for someone and instead of the person getting better, they start, they get worse. The temperature starts going up. Stand your ground. That is basically what I'm saying, stand your ground. Because sometimes on his way out, he will try and do, create some drama. Paul, the apostle, also exercised his authority. One day, as we were going to the place to pray, we met a servant girl who could tell what was going to happen in the future by a demon she had. Her owner made much money from her power. She followed Paul and asked crying out, "These are servants of the highest God, of the most high." A different translation says, "They are telling you how to be saved from the punishment of sin. She did this many days. Paul was troubled. Then he turned and said to the demon in her, "In the name of Jesus, I speak to you. Come out of her." At once it left her. This passage is from Acts, chapter 16, from verse 16 to 18. Now, this is an interesting passage and I find it, at least I find it quite interesting because we all knew how discerning Paul the apostle was and how he walked in power. How was it possible that Paul allowed this girl to follow, I think it says three days somewhere, to follow him three days, or in fact, I actually said many days or more than three, to allow this girl to just follow him many days, a demon, and now send him many days before he cast that demon out? You see, this takes us back to the question about how do we know? How do we discern? What do we? Even Paul didn't get it perfect, just remember that. Nobody is perfect in these things, we are all learning. Paul let this demon walk after, behind him all these days. But you know what I think was happening? Is because of what the, the girl was saying. She wasn't saying, oh, these guys are evil men. He said, these are servants of the most high God. No, it was true. Imagine that somebody started announcing to you, oh, this guy's a servant of God, or this guy's a child of God. Hello, it's the truth. It's the truth. So he couldn't discern it because of what the girl was saying. But the Bible says he was troubled. Now that's something that you're going to need to be sensitive to. Because God lives in you, he will let you feel his emotions. It's very important. We tell people, oh, Jesus will come into your heart, you know. And then after the person gets saved, we don't talk about Jesus inside the person's heart anymore. It's like, you came, you came, what, what is he, why is he now? Where is he? If he's there, how, how am I supposed to sense him? What's he doing? Is he here or is it just make believe? He's here. And he will let you know how it feels. And you need to start becoming sensitive. I mean, time will come, we'll start to talk about how to know the voice, how to hear the voice of God, how to know that, you know, God is talking to you, et cetera. We'll, we'll talk about that. But you know what? God was troubled. What the girl was saying was not troubling, was troubling. She was telling the truth. But Paul was troubled. Because the spirit inside of him knew the, the source of those words. Because the devil can quote the Bible. Don't think that the devil is always going to give you a blatant lie. Sometimes he will tell you the truth. But he'll be hiding the whole lot from you. So these words, they were like bribery. They were like flattery. Saints of God, hallelujah, man of God, you know, those words, you know, eh, man of God, man of God. It dulls your conscience, your, 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 you're no longer alert, you're no longer watchful. Everybody's praising you. Yeah, you were. This girl was, but the Bible says Paul was troubled, the spirit. Because the Lord inside of him was not happy with it. Then he descended at some point. No, this is not normal. Commanded that spirit and it came out of her. I mean, it's such a powerful example that, you know, nobody is perfect. Nobody is perfect. It also, and it also goes to show you that this thing that we are talking about, you're not doing it by yourself. The Lord is inside you, stirring you up, working in you both through will and to do of his good pleasure. Helping your infirmity when you don't know what to do. He is there. You now need to start tuning it more. If you go into a situation that you were, you were happy before, and suddenly you go in, you haven't heard anything bad, you haven't seen anything bad, but you feel disquiet, you feel some, you feel a bit unsettled. Don't just walk away. Become attentive. Lord, say a quiet prayer. Lord, can you let me, please help me discern what's going on? If you are attentive, the first thoughts that will come to your mind, if you follow that thought pattern, it might lead you to the truth. This is, this is how it's done, by the way. When you hear some big man of God somewhere discerning business, that's all that happens. It's not by vision. It's not, it's very rare that the Lord gives people vision, because vision is not practical. You know why? Say, I'm talking to you. So you sit in front of me, I'm talking to you. And God wants to speak to me about you. And then I have to go have a vision. Soon as I start having a vision, it's like you go into a trance. You can't talk to that person. The person will say, hey, hello, are you okay? Are you all right? Before you know it, you've got a doctor. It's not practical. So God doesn't talk to people through visions all the time. These are rare, rare occurrences. Rather, he will speak in your heart. A thought will come. And then you will like, oh, that's an interesting thought. But many of us would discard those thoughts. If you follow that thought and start reasoning it out, suddenly you realize, like a snowballing effect, that thought will grow bigger. New ideas will be added. There's, oh, before you know it, you've got a bigger, whole understanding insight into the situation. Okay, we need to start learning these things. Because Jesus didn't come into your place to, into, into, into your heart to be some kind of a passenger, some tourist. No. He came to, to live your life together with you. When you step into a situation, you don't step in that situation alone. He comes there with you. You see what's going on, he sees what's going on. You form some judgment, he forms some judgment. Compare notes. Lord, what's going on? This is what I'm seeing. What's going on? Sometimes you won't catch what he's telling you straight away. Do you know why? Your emotional state. You might not be in the right frame of mind. Bitterness, anger, sorrow, worry. We've talked about emotions. These things, they block of the voice of God. I mean, just as simple, they block of the voice of God. When Elijah became almost depressed and ran away from Jezebel, the Bible says, he went and sat on the tree, juniper tree, and then he prayed that, you know, um, I'm ready to die. God, come and take me away. I'm ready to die. Now, this was a man who used to hear from God directly. The Lord would whisper and he would, he would hear it. But in that state, where he was like, ready to die, couldn't hear from God. God had to send an angel to come physically and wake him up. Say, hey, 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 wake up. And then give him food to eat. God was not handling internally. Why? Because he couldn't detect the voice of God anymore because of his emotions. So your emotions can crowd out the voice of God. But what we are saying is, when you get your motion in the right place, be sensitive. There's a difference between your emotions and God's emotions. Your emotions will usually be driven, you know, will be subject to fluctuations and will respond to what's going on around you. I'm talking about one where you know, I have nothing, no reason to feel disturbed and I'm sensing, you know, I'm feeling a bit disturbed in this situation. I wonder what's going on. Take yourself out of that place so that you can clear your head and then say, Lord, what's going on? Give me understanding. And if it's not possible to get out of that situation, then get into your head, into that quiet place in your head where you could be sitting in front of somebody, but he doesn't know that you actually pray. And go there and speak to the Lord. Lord, I need some understanding. I need discernment of this situation. You start practicing these things. That's how the weapons that we've been talking about will become effective. Otherwise, you end up with, look, beautiful theory, but you wouldn't know how to actually exercise it. This is how you start to exercise it in practice. This example here is also interesting. Jesus exercised his authority over Satan. Bible says, from that time, Jesus began to show to his disciples that he must go to Jerusalem and suffer many things from the elders and chief priests and scribes, and be killed and be raised from the dead. The third day, the third day, sorry. Then Peter took him aside and began to rebuke him, saying, far be it from you, Lord. This shall not happen to you. But he turned and said to Peter, get thee behind me, Satan. You are no offense to me, for you are not mindful of the things of God, but the things of man. Matthew chapter sixteen, verse twenty-one to twenty-three. So we all know this passage very well. You know, Peter had just finished proclaiming that Jesus was the son of God, and Jesus said, that, that, Peter, and upon this drop, I shall build my church. And then, as was typical for Peter, he would go from grass to grace or, or vice versa very quickly. Yeah, he was. Suddenly, he didn't understand what Jesus was talking about when he was talking about his death. He tried to stop Jesus, discern the situation, and he rebuked Peter. See, he was decisive there. He didn't, you know, he didn't think, oh gosh, if I say this thing, it's going on. It's going to offend him. And sometimes we care about human opinion so much that we never get to do what is right. We never get to do what is right. But to please God, we need to learn to have, you know, be, be like the orchestra that has one audience. There's one, one, one person as their audience, God. And speak. They do what you need to do. Of course, there are times when we have to speak, season our speech with salt, talk to people kindly, gently. But when we see the devil's hand, we've got to be decisive. Because a gentle approach might just not work. So something I mentioned earlier, you won't master the art of, you know, exercising your authority overnight. But if you persevere, you will grow more confident over time. And this relates to something I said about, um, about law enforcement, because, you know, we are essentially law enforcers. The devil and his cohorts, they are like squatters who have gone to occupy a building illegally. And we have authorization from the Lord to evict them. But if we don't exercise our authority, well, it will lead to problems. Authority was given to mankind so as to instill order on earth. And whenever authority is not used, you know what happens? You all heard, you know, me talk about absentee leadership. It's, you, you, some of you may have experienced it. You have a boss who is like they are not there because they are not, never able to stand in the authority and do what they need to do. Therefore, the, the employees, the, the people working under him, they do whatever they want. And then there's always one who likes to step into the position that has been vacated by this leader. He starts leading. I, I experienced this one firsthand. It wasn't, it wasn't the next in command that usurped authority. No. It wasn't even somebody who was three steps behind. Somebody was much, much lower. It was vocal, decisive. And at some point, this absentee leader used to look up to this person, used to look up to them. And the rest of the people were frustrated. People leaving, quitting their jobs. Because someone was not standing in the authority that they had been given. Well, this applies to spiritual things as well. You're supposed to stand in the authority that God has given you. If you don't, if you fail to exercise that authority, it'll be chaos, chaos in your life, chaos in the lives of people you love. Governments, pastors, parents, husbands, et cetera, have all been given authority. And they must exercise it in order to establish God's order on earth. If parents fail to do so, they will raise unruly children. When governments fail to exercise the God-given authority, where they open the door to anarchy, people doing whatever they want. Absentee bosses invite chaos. And the company won't grow. Failure to exercise authority in a garden of Eden led to serious consequences for mankind. Adam failed to exercise his authority. Adam and Eve together failed to exercise the authority over the devil. Consequences we are still weeping today. So that runs up the topic of authority as it relates to spiritual warfare and other, other areas.